Thursday, January 26, 2023, I'll go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Deschutes County Planning Commission. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from January 12, 2023. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the minutes?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we approve the meeting minutes from January 12. Is there any discussion on this motion, Commissioner Cyrus? Other commissioners?
Ma'am Chair, I will probably not vote on this. I have not had a chance to review them yet.
Commissioner Williams, do you have any comments?
I do not.
So in that case, we'll go ahead and proceed to vote. Commissioner Cyrus, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hope Camp?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Okay, I'll go ahead and vote yes as well. So the motion is passed four to zero with one commissioner abstaining. And I see Susan is here now as well.
I'm here. My video, for some reason, is not working, but I'm here, and I would also vote to approve the minute.
Okay. Um, hmm. So, does anyone have an objection if we count it as five to zero then?
Fine with me.
Okay.
You're the chair.
Just checking to make sure you're cool with that. So, in that case, the motion is passed five to zero that we approve the minutes from January 12, 2023. All right, so we'll now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is public comment. So tonight we'll be having an opportunity to comment on item one, housekeeping amendments, public hearing. We will not be accepting any public comments for item two deliberations on the amateur ham radio, as we had our public hearing for that prior to today. We will also not be accepting public comments during planning commission and staff comments, but we will be open to comments from public about items not on the agenda at this time. Are there any comments?
Sure.
Come on up.
Trying to get practice.
And go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jack Farley. I live at 19345 Dusty Loop in Tamala. And I just want to say I was able to attend the recent work sessions of the Board of County Commissioners on the update to the current work plan, and it seems very clear now that the wildlife inventory update will be of a highest priority. Also, it seemed as though the Commissioners were excited about pursuing the dark skies issue. So I'm very excited to help the planning commission engage with the public and gather citizen input on these important issues. With regard to tonight's agenda, I'm familiar with both items, both the amateur radio facilities proposed amendments and also the housekeeping amendments, and I'm willing and able to participate in the conversation if I'm invited by the chair. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll now proceed to our next item. Action items. Number one, 2023 Housekeeping Amendments Public Hearing. I'll turn it over to Kyle Collins, Associate Planner.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner. Give me a second here, I'm gonna share my screen to help us run through some stuff. All right. So as Chair Kears pointed out, this is a public hearing on file number 247-22-000922-T-A on proposed amendments to the Deschutes County Code and the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to correct minor errors identified by staff, other county departments, and the public. The proposed amendments will also incorporate updates from rulemaking at the state level through amendments to the Oregon revised statutes and Oregon administrative rule. The planning commission, or the commission in this case, will hear oral testimony, receive written testimony, and consider the testimony submitted at this hearing. Please note that the hearing is also being recorded, and that the commission may ultimately make a decision on this matter today, continue the hearing to a date certain, or leave the written record open for a specified period of time. The hearing will be conducted in the following order. Staff representing Deschutes County as the applicant will give a report on this issue, and we will then open the hearing to all present and ask people to provide testimony either in person or by video or phone. Those in person can also provide the commission with a copy of written testimony. You can hand that directly to me as staff. All record materials can be found at the project website, which is shown here on the screen. Please note that questions to and from the commission's chair may be entertained at any time at the chair's discretion, but cross-examination of people testifying will not be allowed. However, if any person wishes to ask a question of another person during that person's testimony, please direct your question to the chair after being recognized. The chair is free to decide whether or not to ask such questions of the person testifying. Prior to the commencement of the hearing, any party may challenge the qualifications of any commissioner for conflict of interest. This challenge must be documented with specific reasons supported by facts. And should any commissioner be challenged, the member may disqualify himself or herself, withdraw from the hearing, or make a statement on the record of their capacity to hear and decide on the issue. Following the hearing procedures, we will ask if any members of the commission need to set forth any information that may be perceived as a conflict of interest. I'll next move forward to the hearing procedures themselves. Please note that this is a hybrid meeting with both remote and in-person testimony available. During the hearing, in-person testimony will be allotted first. When providing testimony, please state your name and mailing address for the record. After providing in-person testimony, we'll then move on to remote testimony, first starting with Zoom panelists. Please note that if you are participating via Zoom, you are currently identified as an attendee, but if you want to provide testimony, you'll be upgraded to a panelist. You'll see if you are a panelist on the video, you'll have control of your audio. Some important tools to be aware of if you're participating via Zoom, which is your mute button, your stop video, and your raise hand feature, which is particularly important. At the time that we accept testimony from Zoom participations, we'll ask that those participating via Zoom to use that raised hand feature, and we'll take note of each and cycle through all of the participants in that manner. These are all of the various things that we've gone through, where you can find them on your screen, both the mute button, stop video, and the raised hand feature. After moving through all the Zoom participants, we'll then move on to phone participants. Please note that if you're participating via telephone, you can use star six to both mute or unmute yourself, and star nine to, again, use that raised hand feature. At the time that we're accepting testimony from members of the public via telephone, please use, again, that star nine feature to raise your hand. We'll accept your testimony and then promote you to, again, a panelist, and then demote you to an attendee status after you finalize that testimony. That process will be repeated until all those that are participating via Zoom and phone have entered any testimony that they want. I do want to note that if the county's internet connection is interrupted at any time, we'll attempt to get back online as soon as possible, but if this happens, please give us a couple of minutes to reactivate the public hearing before you attempt to rejoin the meeting or click the link to get back in. If your own connection is interrupted at any time, please attempt to join back in using the same link or phone number that you used initially. Some general ideas. This will be an orderly hearing at the discretion of the commission's chair. If you have any written testimony that you'd like the commission to receive tonight, that can either be submitted to staff in person or can be emailed to myself. You can see my email address listed here on the screen. And then finally, if requested by the commission, staff will provide any closing comments, but with that, I will turn it over to the chair for disclosures and any objections to the hearing format.
All right. Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed. Seeing heads go back and forth on Zoom as well. Okay.
Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner based on conflicts of interest at this time?
Okay. As no challenges are presented prior to opening the hearing, does anyone have any procedural objections to the public hearing? Seeing none, the hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief staff report.
All right. So some general background here, as I noted in the opening statements, this is a set of what we describe as housekeeping amendments. These are periodic amendments to both the Deschutes County Code and occasionally to the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan, and their general purpose is to correct errors found in the code, either identified by staff or members of the public, to reinstate omissions, things that were unintentionally left out of the code, incorrect references, things of that nature, and to reflect any changes or updates to state and federal law. Impact-wise, there are some minor changes to permitted uses or use standards that are in alignment with state statutes, but no state statutes, administrative rules, or land use goals apply to these changes, again, because they are simply minor corrections to errors found in the code primarily. Here's a list of all the proposed chapters associated with the Deschutes County Code and one chapter of the Comprehensive Plan that will be affected by these proposed amendments. I won't go through all of these in explicit detail tonight. They're included as a part of the meeting packet. You can see them attached to the memo that was prepared or the planning commission here tonight, if you want to dive into the independent details, but you can see it's quite a lot of individual chapters that are being affected. I will give some very general information on what some of the proposed amendments are. Planning Commissioners, this will be a repeat of information you heard during your work session two weeks ago, but for the sake of members of the public, I'd like to go through it again. The first set of amendments are what I would describe as process errors. You can see this is affecting section 17.24.060 of the Deschutes County Code, and it specifically has to do with information that is required on all final plats that are submitted as part of a partition or a subdivision approval. A final plat is just the actual Mylar documentation that's ultimately recorded with the county that shows, yes, you've gone through the process and you now have however many lots you're ultimately approved for. The current language in our code states that those final plats require a signature from the Deschutes County Environmental Health Director. That's actually not the process that's been in place. It's actually the Deschutes County Environmental Soils Division. It's primarily the ones that are signing off on these. Generally, what they're looking at is they have to go through a process to determine if an onsite wastewater system is being proposed for new lots that are being created, that they actually have space to approve those, and ultimately, this is just the final verification that they are aware of the application. The lots themselves can have these wastewater treatment systems approved on site, and they're just giving their final go-ahead. So this is just aligning what the current practice is with our language in the code. The next set of proposed amendments are what I'll describe, excuse me, as amendment errors. This affects a portion of our Exclusive Farm Use Code. It's 1816070. This has to do with our, what we describe as solar setback standards, or setbacks from the northern property line. This is put in place across all chapters of the Deschutes County Code and Title 18. It has to do with properties that are constructing new development to prevent them from casting shadow on solar access portions of their neighboring properties to the north. Any type of structure that's being built has to observe a certain setback that's contingent in the height of the structure being built. A previous set of amendments ultimately removed this particular condition from the exclusive farm use zone. That was done erroneously. It was never intended to be removed. It just, through shuffling of individual components of the code, was left out in a previous iteration, and so this is now just putting it back in where that erroneous removal occurred. In practice, this has been followed even during the removal in the exclusive farm use zone over time. Historically, that's always been the case, so this is just correcting, again, that omission that was unintentional. The next set of amendments I'll describe as definitional errors. So a previous set of housekeeping amendments in 2019 altered several items that were related to solid waste disposal or recovery. Some of those terms included things like land disposal sites, disposal sites, recycling facilities, among others. And the goal of that previous set of amendments was ultimately to bring what had, over time, become a grouping of a bunch of different terms related to solid waste disposal that were not aligned with state statutes, to align those more thoroughly with the ORS language for, in this case, disposal site and land disposal site. Unfortunately, a number of chapters were not picked up in that previous round of housekeeping amendments, and so these old terms that don't have alignment with state code were left within our local code and ordinances. And so to maintain consistency throughout our local code, we're now finding all of those references to things like recycling center, landfill, et cetera, and making them explicitly aligned with the ORS definitions for disposal site and land disposal site. These are all the code chapters that are being affected by those definitional edits. Again, I'm not going to go through each one individually, but you can pick through and find where there's differing terms originally existed and now they're all being replaced with either a reference to disposal site or land disposal site. Last couple code chapters there. The next set of amendments relate to changes in Oregon state law. You can see a couple different chapters are being affected here. These all have to do with temporary RV residence uses on properties. So under normal circumstances, RVs cannot be utilized as a full-time residence on individual pieces of property throughout Deschutes County. There are exceptions to those rules related to things like medical hardship dwellings, and the updates to state law also allow a new use for those impacted by natural disasters or things like wildfire impacts in particular in Deschutes County. And so ultimately, all of these changes are intended to bring those new requirements online within Deschutes County Code. The specific reference in the bill that passed in 2021 is House Bill 2809, and it specifically states that we have no authority to prohibit disallowing the use of a recreational vehicle on a lot that's been damaged by natural disasters. Again, that's a temporary use, so it's not intended to be indefinite in time. It's really just intended to allow somebody to reside on their property while they're rebuilding an initial dwelling that was destroyed for some reason. Some additional edits that are included in here that were not related to the House bill, we had some, over time, had come out of alignment with some of the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, and specifically, the Department of Land Conservation and Development referenced this as we started preparing this set of amendments. And so just to make sure that we were fully in alignment with those state and national codes related to the flood insurance program, we changed a few areas of our temporary use program related to citing RVs within floodplain zones. The next update to state law regarding verifying legal lots of record, this is in our section 2204040, and House Bill 2884 also passed in 2021, altered an option that property owners had to validate units of land that were not currently identified as what we describe as legal lots of records. It extended the timeline for that process from initially 90 days to 365 days. I won't go into kind of the nitty-gritty details here, but generally, if a property was previously developed, even if it were not divided under a specific set of rules, so it didn't go through a formal partition or subdivision process, but it was developed with, let's say, a single-family dwelling, for example, so the county had issued permits to those particular properties, this allowed a process wherein a property owner could go through with a single-lot partition to validate that unit of land and thus never have issues with legal lot of record status moving forward. Previously, that 90-day limit was causing a lot of issues, generally for people to get through the process very quickly, and so that's being extended up to a full year. The last thing I'll talk about here is an update to our Goal Five Cultural and Historic Resources Inventory. It's a relatively minor edit. It's been pointed out to staff over time that the Lynch &amp; Roberts store advertisement, which is listed as one of our historic resources, was currently listed as being on the incorrect tax lot, and so this just alters that particular designation and notes what the correct location is. So it changes the tax lot to where it's actually found. And with that, I will move on to some of our agency comments that we received after submitting our packet here. So as I noted previously, we received some feedback from the Department of Land Conservation and Development regarding the temporary RV residency code provisions, particularly those related to floodplain areas. And in order to incorporate the specific changes that they recommended, as I noted, we made those alterations to align our code with the National Flood Insurance Program. Next set of agency comments that we had, we had a request from our Deschutes County building official very recently, probably before you even looked at the packet, or, excuse me, after you received your packet for this meeting. There was a request from him to see if we could prohibit additions to temporary use structures, especially manufactured homes, that might be considered permanent additions, so thinking about things like decks, cabanas, that could be added onto something like an RV or manufactured home. That request was specifically made, I guess it can cause issues, as these are temporary uses in nature, once you actually have to move them off-site in most cases. That causes challenges if you have a permanent structure attached to them. However, I'll point out that the proposed amendments, as we currently have drafted, do limit permanent additions to RVs. That's been the past practice. That was previously in a set of our code, and it's been promulgated throughout all the possible temporary RV residences that are allowed in Deschutes County Code. But trying to add that same provision specifically to manufactured homes, even though they are, again, still outlined as temporary uses in this particular manner, staff found that that probably rises to the level of a policy decision in Deschutes County's choice and actually goes beyond what we would describe as general housekeeping, which, as we've pointed out a few times here, is just to correct codes, reflect changes to state law. And so we can certainly pursue that at some point in the future, either at the direction of Board of County Commissioners if they want to undertake this, but ultimately, it would likely require a separate legislative process. Last set of agency comments, our transportation planner ultimately reviewed all the amendments to find compliance with statewide planning Goal 12, and specifically, the transportation planning rule. After looking through all the amendments, found that they were in alignment with those transportation planning rules, given that they're either going to have reduced trip impacts, given the code changes, or an unchanged level of traffic impacts from any of these proposed changes. Next, I'll comment on the one set of public comments that we did receive. There were two comments from Diane Lizzito and Nunzi Gould, specifically concerning the Lynch &amp; Roberts store advertisement. As pointed out, that listed historic resource was incorrectly identified on a tax lot it was not listed on. As we pointed out here, as a part of the package, we're updating that historic resource in the Comprehensive Plan to note the correct location. Now I'll move on to next steps for the commission to consider here tonight. You have a few different options. You can either continue this hearing to a date and time certain. You can close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date and time certain. You can close the hearing and set a specific date for deliberations, or you could close the hearing and commence deliberations tonight if you so choose. And with that, I will open it up to any questions from Commissioners.
Any Commissioners have a question for Kyle? And I can't see the Commissioners yet. Okay, there they are. Okay, great.
Actually, I would have a question.
Sure.
And maybe, you know, whether it's now's the appropriate time or not, I was just curious, little follow-up on what was, what you were talking about as far as permanent additions to temporary dwellings.
Yeah.
What is a permanent addition?
So I, in the case of Randy Scheider, our building official, he pointed to a few separate incidences. It doesn't happen a lot, but I have somewhere where allotted a permit for, let's say, a medical hardship dwelling, and they cite a manufactured home on site, because there is some undefined limit to that use on site. But in a few instances, people were building site-built structures as essentially additions onto that. So you could imagine, I wanted to build like an enclosed porch onto a manufactured home to extend the living area of that particular use. The challenge that creates, obviously, is the moment that medical hardship dwelling or whatever the temporary dwelling use on site is, normally, that structure has to be moved off-site. That's one of the primary ways to kind of conclude that use, but it is challenged by the fact that there's this permanent stick-built structure that's attached to it.
That wouldn't include, like, decks and things like that?
I think it probably would include decks, but generally, I think he was more concerned with things like cabanas, an actual extension of the square footage of the structure as like an internal space.
Okay. I guess, I mean, we can deliberate on that, I guess, later. I just, I can certainly see where you're coming from or where there are concerns for an addition, but I know decks can go up and come down quicker than the temporary unit itself.
So a question, follow-up for Kyle on the same topic. So as long as, i.e. a deck, is not nailed or attached to the housing unit, therefore, that would be okay?
I think in that particular instance, yes. I think the primary, ultimately, I would need to defer to our building official to get kind of a formal assessment of where these situations arise and what causes the most problems, but ultimately, I think what they're trying to narrow in on is specifically an addition onto something like a manufactured structure that was not intended to have any type of formal physical additions nailed onto the outside.
Okay.
Versus something like a deck, which is just a platform. It might be one foot off the ground. It might just be ground level.
And freestanding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we will now move to our public comment section. We do have a member of the public present in person. Do we have any members of the public present on Zoom? the public present in person. Do we have any members of the public present on Zoom? We do. Okay, great. So we'll offer the opportunity to our member of the public in person first. If you would like to comment about this item, the 2023 housekeeping amendments, now would be the time to do that. If you would like to.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, excellent. And so during, once we're deliberating about our procedural decision, we will not be allowing any more public comments at that time. Okay, let's go to our member of public on the Zoom and see if that member would like to comment. If you would, please raise your Zoom hand, and then we can elevate you as a panelist. And that's also fine. You don't have to public comment. It's not required. But just giving you a couple more seconds in case you do. Okay, so we will go ahead and consider, again, the options that Kyle laid out just now. Our options are, we can continue this hearing to a date certain. We could close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date certain. We could close the hearing and set a date for deliberations, or we could close the hearing and start deliberations right now.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cyrus.
I move to close deliberations, or excuse me, close the hearing and open deliberations.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
I would second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Hofcamp had it by hair, that we close the hearing and open deliberations at this time. Is there any discussion on this motion, starting with Commissioner Cyrus? Do you have anything to say why you would like to do it this way?
Yeah, just real simple is, we obviously don't have anybody testifying. We've seen what the proposal are, and I'm ready to go ahead and deliberate. And we certainly have some time on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Other debate on this motion? Okay, well, I'll also say that I think it makes sense to me, because we've now heard the presentation twice, so we've had considerable time to think over the presentation after the first one. So I don't, I personally don't feel I need more time to mull over, as I often do with other public hearings. So let's see, if there is no further debate on the motion, we can proceed to vote. I'm not seeing any Zoom hands. Commissioners on Zoom, I will need you to unmute yourselves, at least to, in order to vote. Okay. Commissioner Cyrus, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hof, or Vice Chair Hofcamp? Commissioner Crawford?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kirby?
Yes.
I will also vote yes. So that is seven yeses and zero nos. So that means the motion is passed. We'll go ahead and close the hearing now and commence deliberations.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cyrus.
I move to recommend adoption as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Crawford had it by hair. So it's been moved and seconded to go ahead and adopt as recommended. Is there debate on this motion, starting with Commissioner Cyrus?
Yeah, as, as you eloquently stated a few minutes ago, is, we've seen this twice. We've had no comment from the public. I think the, the, as housekeeping goes, I think it all makes sense, and I'm ready to support it.
Okay. Is there other, are there other comments on this motion?
I might just have a quick question, if that's okay.
Sure. Vice Chair Hofcamp?
Kyle, I think I understand what's going on with the RV portion of the housekeeping amendments, and that, I've been scrolling back and forth trying to find it again, but that, that language change is an addition to bring us into compliance with state law.
Correct.
And that we also took the opportunity to provide a clarification there on the, on the time limit as well. So it's both, I guess, more permissive in the sense that there's a use there that wasn't there before, but it's, I wouldn't say restricted, but it's clarifying how long that use can, can be present. Is that, is that accurate, or not quite?
It's not clarifying that the use is, so prior to this suite of amendments, we only had two possible options for RV residences. One is RVs while building a permanent residence. That's kind of, if you're trying to build a stick-built structure, but you still want to live on site, there's an allowance for that that was pre, pre-included in our code. The second is, I would say, the more common, which is what we describe as medical hardship dwellings. So if you have a family member that wants to live on site, or you want to live on their property to provide them care, this allows you to establish that temporary residence, either an RV or a manufactured home, for the duration that you're either providing care or receiving care. This adds a third option that was not previously allowed under state law, has to do with properties that are affected by natural disasters. So if there's a declaration from the governor in this particular case that a natural hazard has affected a particular area, your home is destroyed during that event, this allows you a period of time to live on your property while you're making efforts towards rebuilding the house that was destroyed under that condition. It's a little bit longer leeway than the first option that I referenced, that just you have a, a previously undeveloped property that you want to build something on. But there are some limitations to it. So you have to show that you're making progress towards doing it. And then ultimately, I think it's a two-year window that you're allotted once you start the process, that you actually have to finish constructing your building that you can live in there. The second piece that's related to RV residences more generally is, over time, our requirements related to RV residences and designated floodplain areas had gotten out of alignment with the National Flood Insurance Program standards. And so that was called out by DLCD staff, and we particularly, specifically went back in and aligned our code with what those standards are and just referenced the National Flood Insurance standards. Thank you.
Okay. Are there other comments for deliberation? Not seeing any on our Zoom participants either. Okay. Well, in that case, we can go ahead and vote on the question of adopting the amendments as recommended. Commissioner Cyrus, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hofcamp?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
And Commissioner Kirby?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. So that's seven votes yes and zero votes no. So the motion is passed. We, the motion to adopt the amendments as recommended has passed. All right. So we will now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is deliberations on the amateur ham radio facility text amendments. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Nicole Mardell, Senior Planner.
Excellent. Thank you, commissioners. For the record, Nicole Mardell, Senior Planner, Deschutes County Community Development. So the item before you this evening are deliberations on proposed amendments to Deschutes County Code Title 18116290 pertaining to amateur radio facilities. So this is an, a board-directed, county-initiated text amendment that seeks to streamline our process for amateur radio facilities, including creation of two different tiers of regulations based on height. So at the public hearing that was held on January 12th, we had testimony from two folks at that meeting. And just to summarize briefly for deliberations, those comments included general support from an individual who had discussed these with the ham radio community, some questions about the height limit in the airport safety landscape management combining zone, questions about the applicability of building permits for facilities under 70 feet, and concern about amateur radio facilities impacting view sheds and view corridors. So staff has summarized some of that information in your memorandum for this evening, but happy to, to provide additional context for that to aid in your deliberations. But otherwise, as with the previous item, your options this evening are to approve the amendments as proposed, approve the amendments with changes, or deny the proposed amendments, and will then take that recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So with that, I turn it back over to you, Chair, and happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay. So in the past, we have generally started our deliberations with a motion. In this case, I would recommend that we do that as normal. In the future, we'll probably have a bit of discussion about whether we want to do it that way, or if we will prefer to have a pre, pre-motion discussion. But I, I'm going to go ahead and recommend that we go straight to a motion on this particular amendment.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Cyrus?
I move to adopt as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So it has been moved and seconded that we adopt as presented. So is there some comments or debate on this motion?
Yeah, I mean, again, this is another topic that I think, I think the recommendations make sense. We didn't, certainly didn't have any opposition from the, from the community. And I think it's, I'd just as soon see it move up to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Are there other comments or debate on this motion?
Is it appropriate to ask a question, or is that opportunity passed?
It is appropriate to ask a question, as long as it's not asking for new data or new information to be entered into the record. But you can ask staff or commissioners for clarification on things that have already been presented.
Okay, okay. This may, this may have been presented, and you tell me if it's inappropriate. But the, the towers are, these are single-purpose towers. These aren't towers that can have multipurpose and other communications or anything like that put on, on the tower.
Excellent question, commissioners. So yes, the, our code specifically defines amateur radio facilities as use for ham radio operation. We have separate definitions for things like wireless telecommunication facilities. So these would be for an accessory use on a property for a ham radio operation. It wouldn't be, you know, used, used as, say, co-locating with, you know, like a cell phone tower, I would say.
Okay. Yeah, that answers that. And do you know, and if you, if the answer's, you're not sure, that's fine. But are there, are there, is there lighting on these towers?
That's a good question.
It's not a fair question to ask it, Nicole. Sorry.
Well, I'm taking a look at our code briefly here. You know, we do have, let's see here. We do have in our current code a section regarding light. So I, I guess to answer your question, I'm not sure if, if typically they come with lighting or not. But in our code, we do note that amateur radio facilities shall not include attached signage, symbols, or decorations lighted or otherwise. So that's currently in our code as drafted, not proposed to be changed.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Williams?
I am in agreement with Commissioner Cyrus. Nicole's done a great job presenting the information. And with respect to the height in the land, the land management areas, it is in alignment with, like, airport zoning. It's not going to be any higher than, you know, say, any other structures are allowed to be. Therefore, I don't think there's a conflict in the land management area having it to be 30 feet. And that seemed to be the biggest pushback. Otherwise, it seems the community is in support of this, and I am in agreement that we approve as presented.
Other comments or points of debate?
I would offer just one comment, and that the 30-foot is actually lower than what the existing buildings can be, which I believe is 32 feet. And so, I mean, I wouldn't have an objection if the Board of Commissioners were to decide 32-foot was the magic number instead of 30, given that's what you can currently build a structure at without a variance.
Okay. Other comments, thoughts? All right, then we'll go ahead and proceed to vote on the question of move to adopt as presented. Commissioner Cyrus, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hofcamp?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Yes.
Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Kirby?
Aye.
And I'll also vote yes. So that's seven yeses and zero nos. And so the motion to move, the motion to adopt as presented has passed. All right. We'll now move on to our final item of the meeting, Planning Commission and Staff Comments. Nicole, do you have any comments before you sit back down? Any additional comments?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to update the Planning Commission. So previously, for this evening, you did have an item scheduled for review of our third round of comprehensive plan policy edits. We did shift that back a little bit to March. So part of that reason is that we wanted to fully compile all the information from our meeting at a box meetings, which we've still been holding in this month, and we will have a few more early next month. So we plan to come back to you in March for one meeting so that you can review our community engagement audit that's been prepared by our consultants, so showing how we're meeting our engagement targets so far in the comprehensive plan project. You'll see a summary of all of the open house information and a summary of all community feedback we've received from the meeting and a box participation as well. And then at that following meeting in March, then we'll dig back into comprehensive plan policy review. But we wanted to make sure we got all the community input from that first round, too, before we jumped back into policy review.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Will, do you want to go next?
Sure. Thank you. Will Groves, your Planning Manager. I've got a couple updates for you. We did, as promised, talk to the Board yesterday for updates for the work plan. And of the remaining discretionary zoning text amendments, they expressed a preference to engage with the repeal of the conventional housing combining zone. That's a zone in the county that in some areas precludes the, the placement of manufactured homes. There was a legislative action in recent years that has precluded jurisdictions from having such regulations. So it's, in some ways, a formality. If someone came in today and asked to build a manufactured home in that zone, we would point to the legislature and say that the zone has no effect. But we want to do a tidy up and get that off the books. Also, they expressed some interest in revisiting RV regulations. So when people are using a temporary use RV for recreational purposes on a property, there had been some concerns about septic safety, fire safety, other issues like that. And so it's been a long, longstanding difficulty in code enforcement where some of these, what are, you know, were intended initially to be snowbird uses of the property, where people are here in the summer and typically in Arizona in the winter, have turned into permanent residences. We've had examples where people have the, you know, basically are using trash fires that have spread to adjacent properties. And so just sort of revisiting this to see if there's any additional regulatory structure that should be put on these things with regard, particularly to septic. As you can imagine, when somebody's saying an RV use on the property, there's, you know, under DEQ regulations, you're not allowed to put your dishwater to ground that's supposed to be going into a septic system or taken offsite. Certainly, other, other fluids are probably discharged to ground that are supposed to be going into a system as well. So just thinking about ways to help make that go more smoothly. And so you'll see some legislative effort on that, in that regard, as we, as we move forward. I've got an email from Transportation Planner, Senior Transportation Planner, Peter Russell. You'll apologize as I read it, because I don't want to miss anything. He wanted to give you an update on the transportation system plan. The county held an online open house from December 5th to 31st on the project priority list, which dealt with the road improvements for both intersections and segments, bicycle routes, sidewalks, et cetera. Staff and the consultant have reviewed approximately 160 comments and are working on revisions to the draft project priority list. Main themes were supportive improvements of the listed paving projects, especially Sunrise Boulevard, support for improvements to county roads just east of Bend, support for a bike-ped bridge across the Deschutes River by the southwest edge of the city of Bend, and City of Redmond requesting, including 19th Street from southeast Redmond down to a planned interchange at US 97 Quarry. There were some concerns about potential interchange on 97 to serve the southern sections of Deschutes River Woods, and there was opposition to a multi-use path between Sisters and Black Butte Ranch. Staff anticipates a public hearing for the Planning Commission to begin in late spring, early summer 2023. He also had an update with the Tumalo Community Plan. Of course, that's the, from the transportation grant for the Tumalo Bike-Ped Transit Element, as well as the Rural Trails in Sisters Country. And staff has received revised various policies in the draft Tumalo Community Plan based on feedback from the last open house we had. The consultant is preparing draft policies for the bike-ped element of the Tumalo Community Plan based on feedback from the public and stakeholders. Similarly, the consultant is working on draft maps and policies for the Rural Trails in Sisters Country. As the Board has talked about having a Tumalo repres- As the Board has talked about having a Tumalo representative placed on the Planning Commission in July to fill upcoming vacancies, staff has, uh, decided to defer the Trans, the Tumalo Community Plan and Transportation Grant, um, Management Recommendation until the PC, to the PC until July or later. So, uh, just making, making sure everything's aligning with that, and that was all he had for updates. I also, I don't know if you were tracking, uh, certainly, and we've been watching Senate Bill seven-sixty-two, the state, uh, wildfire mapping efforts, and, and as they relate to the, uh, accessory dwelling units, uh, that was Senate Bill three-ninety-one. Uh, Oregon will delay the release of conventional, of the wildfire maps for a second time as the legislature takes up the issue. Number of bills have been introduced, this section, that could impact, uh, how the map, uh, comes together, and so we're, uh, we're also in a holding pattern as we wait to see what legislative action might occur, uh, that could affect, um, both that wildfire mapping effort or any local, uh, amendments we might need and the relation to, uh, accessory dwelling units. There have been some, uh, bills proposed specifically in the legislature to decouple the accessory dwelling units from the wildfire standards, varying from just generally decoupling them to, um, uh, some other discussions at various levels of trying to pull those two apart, given that at this point, they're hitched to the wildfire maps and those things are held up significantly at this point, as the legislature may give new guidance to the Department of Forestry on how to put those maps together. Um, and that's what I had on my list. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Okay, Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. Just have three items, uh, very briefly. As I mentioned at your last meeting, on February first, uh, staff, uh, will be initiating a recruitment for two Planning Commission vacancies, one for a Tumalo area representative and the other for an at-large, uh, representative. The recruitment will go out for the entire month. Um, we'll have a, uh, an update on our website that allow, that basically, uh, you know, describes the press release yet again, um, a link to the application, and, um, it's on our, this is, it'll be sent, we have a designated page for the Planning Commission, so it'll, um, provide context of who's on the Planning Commission and whatnot. Um, in March, I'll coordinate with the Board of County Commissioners to understand how they want to, uh, review the applications, get those down to a manageable number for interviews. Uh, Chair Karas and Vice Chair Hofkamp, I would be prepared if the pass is any indication that all three Commissioners will want to participate, in which case the three of us would join one Commission, uh, during a round of interviews. I can see the interviews happening in March and April, um, uh, with the goal of having those Commissioners, um, appointed effective July first of this year, but that would allow them to, you know, part, you know, well, not participate directly on the Pl, Planning Commission, but to the extent that they wanted to participate, uh, attend meetings virtually or in person, they could do so for a soft, you know, six to eight weeks to get up to speed. Um, so that's, uh, the first topic. The, the second, second topic I thought you might be interested in is today, the Land Conservation and Development Commission had their meeting, and there were two, uh, local decisions that the Land Conservation and Development Commission directed the Department of Land Conservation and Development to engage in land use Board of Appeal proceedings. One of them involved a shoot, a decision by the Board of County Commissioners. It is, uh, a plan amendment zone change for, uh, it's a property called the Eden Property, seven-hundred-and-ten acres, uh, near, uh, you know, Commissioner Karas and Commissioner Crawford's regions. Um, uh, the Department of Land Conservation and Development submitted a notice of intent to appeal, ad, as did Central Oregon Land Watch, um, but for the Department of Land Conservation and Development to participate formally with the Department of Justice, long story short, is El, Land Conservation and Development Commissioner, LCDC, has to authorize that, and they did so today. Commissioner Devon testified respectfully, um, asking that, uh, LCDC not, uh, uh, appeal that decision, as did the applicant's representative, uh, their attorney, um, but like I said, ultimately, uh, DLCD staff, uh, through, through their engagement with LCDC compelled LCDC to, uh, agree to appeal that decision to Luba, so they will be formally participating. The second item, um, not related to Deschutes County, but on a topic that this Planning Commission discussed very recently had to do with psilocybin. Yamhill County is one of the eleven counties that is allowing this psilocybin to be produced or processed and potentially with service centers. They decided to, in their amendments, to allow psilocybin service centers to, to occur in conjunction with production on farmland, and the Department of Land Conservation and Development participated in their legislative amendment. Um, uh, the Board of County Commissioners adopted that provision related to service centers, and today, LCDC a-agreed to appeal that legislative amendment under the grounds that, uh, that is, that, that ORS four-seventy-five, which codifies the ballot initiative that cr, that allows for so, service, psilocybin service centers, that's, that's, that's not in alignment with ORS two-fifteen pertaining, and two-eighty-three pertaining to county zoning as it relates to farmland. And so this was an interpretive issue. You recall that Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner, uh, raised this issue, um, and DLCD's testimony, which underscored that, uh, the only way that psilocybin service centers could be cited potentially on farmland, which would, was, was, which was, uh, relationship to home occupation or a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. So we'll be tracking this decision and see what happens, and if it, if, if there's clarity, um, if, if Luba were to find that, uh, ORS four-seventy-five doesn't conflict with ORS two-fifteen, then you, I could see our staff engaging the Board and asking if, if we wanted to update our code. Um, my sus, you know, we'll see what happens, um, but I, I certainly, to the extent that, uh, Luba affirms DLCD's interpretation, I think it sets up the legislature for the short session in twenty-twenty-four to consider legislation addressing service centers as it pertains to rural land. The last thing, very quickly, is I just wanted to let the Board know that the Board Account, let the Planning Commission know that the Board of County Commissioners is now engaged in reviewing, uh, the numerous bills, excuse me, that have been introduced thus far. There's hundreds and hundreds of bills. Tomorrow, I'm participating, participating with the Board in an hour just to talk about a few bills that we have called out. Uh, there's some that relate to rural accessory dwelling units, um, that are, that Will touched on briefly. Aye, Commissioner. Um, that, uh, decouple, uh, Senate bills, set, decouple rural accessory dwelling units from the wildfire mapping, and there's some other bills that, uh, pertain to the minimum lot size related to eligible properties. So the Board will be talking about those bills and a few others, and as we, as these issues get further refined, I'll have more to share with this Planning Commission on the Bo, the bills that are starting to separate, that are going to hearing, that are seeing amendments that relate to land, to rural land use. So that, that's, it's, it's very early in the process, but I, I thought you would appreciate just a, a recognition that starting tomorrow morning, the Board of County Commissioners is going to start, uh, discussing, uh, bills that have a certain priority, and, um, I'll keep this Planning Commission informed on those that relate to, uh, rural land use. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
You, Peter. Um, let's see, Kyle, did you have any other updates? Okay, um, hello?
Hello, everyone. I'd like to say hi real quick.
Come on up.
So yeah, uh, thank you very much for your efforts as our Planning Commission, and, uh, yeah, a couple of folks remotely tonight. I was just in Salem, that's where I'm coming back to. I, I saw the lights on, I said, oh, I see what's going on in there, so that's why I was able to stop in tonight. Um, yeah, so the legislative session's just getting started. I was able to make my rounds and just say hi to a whole bunch of people, uh, you know, Representatives and Senators. Uh, there's just a few, uh, scheduled items today. The House had a session, uh, at eleven o'clock, and they just moved a couple of bills along, so it's kind of a slow start. Everybody's in a good mood over there right now, so it's just great to be in the building. Uh, I also testified at, um, the LCDC, so the Land Use Commission meeting just now, this afternoon. We have a rezone that was, uh, um, a hearings officer recommendation for approval, seven-hundred-and-ten acres, pretty big deal, uh, and it got, uh, supported by our Board, uh, two to one, you know, we were sitting up there. And now, uh, DLCD wants to participate in an appeal on that, and it's just kind of the awkward situation where, from my point of view, it fits the, the fact, the, you know, facts of the application fit what other rezones have happened here, and it's that big picture of, you know, resource lands, zoned EFU, haven't been farmed for a profit ever, don't have agricultural water, soils analysis proves that seven and eight, you know, class seven and eight soils, terrible soils predominantly. But, you know, our, uh, uh, Land Use Conservation Development Department's like, well, but that's EFU, that's resource land, and this is important that we keep that, so it's kind of a hot topic around the state. One of the manage, the management guy, um, offered a technical assistance grant for us to study this. So it was just an interesting experience being in Salem today, so, but yeah, thank you for what you're doing here, and it's great to see everybody. Any thoughts or questions? Yeah?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
This is from, uh, Left Field, and, um, concerning a waste disposal site, um, I was in a conversation with the person that's in Lake County.
Oh, oh, uh, yeah, so landfill.
Yes. Is, is there any, uh, thoughts about, instead of locating a waste disposal site in Deschutes County, to moving it to, uh, Lake County?
Sure, and I said comments, uh, yesterday up here because, uh, you know, this, this FAA five-mile zone, uh, comes into play for Redmond and the Bend Airport and Sun River, but there's not any proposals down there, but those two, if we acknowledge that, and it's just a recommendation for the FAA, but I would agree that if I'm taking off or landing in an airplane and it's, uh, you know, solid waste facility attracting birds, that we'd probably want to separate those two, so, um, generally supportive of this. But for us in Deschutes County, we had a solid waste, uh, outreach effort a couple years ago. We've started the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, citizen members, uh, looking at, okay, what's the future of waste? We have a solid waste management plan, the document with analysis and, and community buy-in, that states the most valuable thing we can do for solid waste disposal for the next hundred years is to have a facility under the same structure we have now, which is a enterprise fund of the people, which means it's the people's business of solid waste. And if we can find a location in Deschutes County, generally it's about a square mile, but really not, it's just a big buffer around a, an operation area. If we can find that location in Deschutes County, it's going to be cost-effective long-term. Right now, our tipping fee is sixty dollars a ton, so every ton of waste in the landfill, we kind of average it out to sixty dollars, which breaks out to our, you know, twenty or thirty or forty dollar bill at home, uh, and the twelve or thirteen dollars at the gate when you self-haul. So we're just looking at trying to find a site in this, in the county, because if we contract with a, you know, northern Lake County or, uh, regional landfill a couple hours away, we're just going to be sending trucks on the highway all day, every day. Uh, it was concluded that it's in more environmentally friendly to do it in a shorter distance. So, right now, we're, we're trying, you know, I mean, land use, there's going to be a million reasons why we shouldn't put it somewhere, but if we can find one location in Deschutes County, uh, and it's going to be aligned cell, well-managed, it's not going to be a retail location because we'll still do transfer at Not Landfill and up in, at Negus and Redmond, that's where we'll put it in the trucks and then drive it to our local, uh, location. That's the vision. So if we sign, uh, you know, lease with somebody out of town to say, oh, we'll do it for thirty-five a ton, and thirty-five a ton is kind of the right number because we're, they're just putting it in the ground there. We have to pay for the truck driver and the truck to get it there, we have to pay for the infrastructure of the facility to put it in that truck, the attendance at the front, you know, so thirty-five up to sixty is kind of that operation costs, but if we sign up with somebody for thirty-five, then they'll be like, oh yeah, but it's forty-five now, and then there's new regs, so now we need to make it fifty. So then it's like, you know, it'll be up to a hundred dollars a ton pretty quick. Uh, and I've seen this, I talked to a consultant, uh, at a conference one time, and they came right up to me, and they said, oh, I heard you're talking solid waste, you know, so he was just, he's, you're in Deschutes County. And I mentioned it was fifty-five at the ti, at the time, and now it's sixty, uh, and he said, sixty, is that right? I'm like, I thought about it, I'm like, oh yeah, no, that's our number. He's like, well, that's unheard of, you know, it's ninety-five and a hundred dollars around the country, and, and it goes up from there. So we really do have a cost-effective system. So we should, you know, let's be an advocate for finding a location here. Uh, and if, you know, backup plan is to haul it somewhere else. It's going to be more expensive, it's going to be a lot of truck miles.
Just curious, had the question, so I said I'd follow.
Well, and yeah, there was a discussion about northern Lake County, uh, which is interesting, you know, other counties need this, too. Uh, I think Klamath is, is hauling everything out of their county, I don't know that they have an active landfill, and Lake may be doing the same thing. So there's reasons to do that, and it would be statewide significance. We just happen to be in a spot where we have our facility, our system in place, and it's very cost-effective. So, let's try to, let's do it together, the old college try, so, but yeah, great to see everybody. We are going to be publishing the two seats for July first this year, uh, you know, a couple of expiring seats. Uh, thank you, Jessica, for coming to our board meeting and explaining, well, should we add an extra seat, or should we have somebody short-term, and, you know, Jack's in the middle of all this, he's been advocating for a long time, but we're going to be putting out, uh, requests for two seats, doing that recruiting process, setting up for July first also.
Are there other questions for Commissioner Devon since he's offered?
Anything's fine.
So ask me anything.
I don't, I'm not required to answer, am I?
I'll ask you, I'll ask you something. I was, I was delighted, uh, Commissioner Devon, to see the parking analysis come back that said that rural park was not necessary, um, absolutely necessary anyway, and, um, just curious if you care to comment, um, routes to protection, um, whether ASI designation or potentially park and rec acquisition, or what your thoughts were.
Are you on the park board also?
I am, I need to be careful, but yes, I am.
So, uh, remember a couple of years ago, we're like, well, let's, let's look at an analysis, it could be cost-effective to add parking spots for the courthouse. Courthouse is going to be a two, two, or four courtrooms, three stories, downstairs is going to be, uh, parking and a Sally Port and controls, and then four courtrooms, two stories, with two courtrooms on each one. And when you have a jury trial, we bring in people from all four corners of the county, and I've seen it, I've been in my parking lot on the far side of this building, that way, and people are panicked, they're just kind of circling the parking lot, and it says permit parking and visitor parking, they're like, can I park here? I got to get over to jury duty. So it's, it's an issue, it really is. So we're sitting here, and our, um, uh, you know, property and facilities folks are like, well, this park is this, and it is a geological feature, you know, but the geological feature is underneath the gravel and rocks that have been put there from previous construction attempts, so it's taller than it was because we put rocks on top of that geological feature. And the idea was just to dial it down a little bit, and man, did that trigger some people in opposition, which is fine, you know, it got really exciting. Um, since then, the City of Bend said, oh, you don't need to have onsite parking, it's all good, right? So, it's all in flux. Um, and now, yeah, there's been a request for area of special interest, a City of Bend land use designation. Uh, we talked about it as a board, and, uh, uh, you know, the answer was, well, right now isn't time for, for us to focus on that, let's just move on, you know, somebody's idea is a good, you know, somebody can always ask, but let's not be a partner in that right now. So then the email came back, uh, uh, what's the lady's name, she's on the board now?
Donna Owens.
Donna, yeah. So Donna sent an email back saying, oh, it's okay, I'll fill the paperwork out anyways, like, she's just going to go ahead anyways. Um, so, I mean, it is kind of a community discussion, and ideas are out there. Uh, yeah, I mean, if the park, park board wants it, go ahead and talk about it, it's the people's land, you know, I mean, I'm a Commissioner, but it's the people's land, uh, it is an asset and a, a pollinator refuge in the middle of this area, so whatever, yeah, but it's just a discussion, I'm not opposed to anybody talking about it.
Thank you.
But we, yeah, I mean, we do need parking downtown, uh, you know, events downtown, as I say, it's that, because if we have multiple jury trials, you know, they're going to bring a pool of juror, jurors in there, a proposed pool, which they're going to dial down, but there could be a lot of people show up, you know, three to five years from now, driving in circles looking how to park their car, and obviously, some people And obviously, some people could be riding their bicycles from the Bend area. But remember, this is jury, it's countywide, so that's the big picture.
I sense I just got called up for duty, and I'm asking to be excused. So, my students don't have to scramble and find some other teacher, but.
Well, and I've done that probably two times over the years, last ten or twelve years. And one time was, it was an awkward time, I'm like, ah, I can't believe this. But what I did is I went in, I offered to be on the first jury, and it was kind of like, you know, playing Russian roulette, not, not that root of us is term, but it was like, either I'm going to be on a jury or they're going to excuse me, and it worked out great. I was in there for a whole day, I almost got in there, and then they excused me, and I was done. That was the interesting part, I didn't have to come back to the pool week after week. So, I, it was, yeah, I've been in that spot too.
And you've served now?
Uh, as a juror?
It counts, right, because you showed up.
Oh, yeah, so I did in that one. But I also was selected for grand jury, and I did do that. In fact, we started scheduling our board meetings around the days I needed to be over there, or I couldn't make all the board meetings. But grand jury is really interesting, and that's a one-month commitment, once or twice a week.
Okay.
Great to see everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll go on with Commissioner comments. Any comments?
None.
Okay. Vice Chair Hopekamp?
I'll just thank the Commissioner for stopping in, that was really cool, thank you. That's all I got.
Commissioner Crawford?
Good to see Tony, and I did meet with another constituent last night about the seven hundred and ten acres, and we had a discussion about there's never been a dollar made on that property and probably never will be for agricultural uses, just because of the soil and the water, et cetera. So, I support what's going on.
Commissioner Altman? Comments?
No, no comments.
Okay. Commissioner Williams? And Commissioner Kirby? Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams, you did have a comment.
I was just going to say over the, the last month or two that Kyle and Nicole have done a great job gathering their information and presenting it to us in a concise manner, always have answers for us, and if they don't, they get them. So, just want to thank the two of them for everything they've been doing for these hearings.
Commissioner Kirby?
I'll second that, and thank you, staff, for, for the good updates at the end of the meeting. I did just want to flag for the minutes, sorry I was late joining, but I, I did join at five thirty-three, and then it just took a little bit to get elevated as panelist, so, thank you.
Thank you for, I was sort of trying to figure out exactly when you had appeared on my screen, so thanks for the clarification with the time for the minutes. Okay, well, I'll also thank everyone for being here, and very exciting to see you, Commissioner Devon. But also, great meeting, thanks, everyone. And it being now six forty, I will adjourn the meeting.